Vera moved to vote to accept slash approve the agenda dated January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five as.
Matt Van Ormer second.
Vera moved to vote.
Are we amending the agenda, Mr. Van Ormer?
Um, Matt Van Ormer like to uh move to amend the motion, amend the motion to change agenda item eleven point two to add two motions specifically. Vote to permit policy ninety-one sixty student representative on the Board of Education to be fast tracked by two thirds of vote. Of the members present at tonight's Board of Education meeting and vote to accept and approve the changes to policy ninety-one sixty student representatives. On the Board of Education as presented.
Nate Vera second.
Any questions or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nate Vera. I am a member of the board here in Thomist, but I switch my hats right now. Here on behalf of American Legion Post twenty-two. Um, of Thomaston, just want to say thank you to my fellow Board of Ed members and also Superintendent Cost and Principal Kingsbury. We had our scholarship fundraiser at the post in late November of, or early November of last year. And absolutely exceeded all expectations and I'm happy to announce that the American Legion is now going to be able to double. It's um scholarship commitment to Thomaston resident students. Uh, from five hundred to a thousand and because of the great reception from our great small community. Uh, close tight-knit community, all of our small businesses here at the school and again, the support. Was not any public Board of Ed funds. This is all private. They donated their own personal money. Um, just to be clear, uh, because of that, moving forward, it's now this um very close to the first, but the second. Um, highest account. We exceed all expectations. Usually we'd be lucky to raise five hundred dollars and now the account's sitting at well over five thousand. So we're gonna put some money aside, be fiscally responsible, double the scholarship now, see how we do. Um, with the scholarship fundraiser later in the year, but it is the ambitious goal. Of American Legion Post twenty-two, uh, where I'm the junior vice commander to again try and double. Um, the scholarship commitments um that we put out to Thomiston kids in the upcoming school year. Um, and I just want to um also thank Heather Bolinger, who I worked with, getting all the paperwork done and all the updates and. Um, working with the school. Um, they were very helpful. So just want to thank you and also present certificates that I had printed out. And Principal Kingsbury, you have one as well. Um, for fellow board members for their support as well as for Superintendent Cost. So if we could all give him a round of applause, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Steve Carr vote to accept approve the regular minutes dated, meeting minutes dated December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four as presented.
Vera second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Steve. Steve Carr vote to accept approve the regular meeting minutes dated December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four as presented.
Nate Vera second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Steve Carr vote to accept approve the regular meeting minutes dated December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four as presented.
Nate Vera second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
And Steve Carr vote to accept approve and regular meeting, meeting minutes dated January third, two thousand and twenty-five as presented.
Vera second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thank you very much. Moving in to our recognitions, we have our December Rotary Student of the Month. Who is Grace Lavasser.
Being here and inviting me and my family to this luncheon and thank you to the Rotary Club for choosing to honor me this month. I'd like to preface this by saying that public speaking really isn't in my wheelhouse, but I try to welcome challenges like this that push me out of my comfort zone. I've always had a bit of difficulty with giving myself credit for my accomplishments. When I think about the things I've worked hard for, I know I've put in the time and effort to earn them, but I also know that I wouldn't have achieved any of them without the support of so many others along the way. A great example of this is my recent honor as an athlete of the week. I know that would not have happened without the dedication of my coaches over these past four years, especially Miss Ewer. I couldn't have done it without my teammates either. They made my job look easy. I've also earned academic honors at school and even though I've worked hard for them, I could not have accomplished them without my teachers. Their guidance and knowledge and them challenging me to work hard, to put in that extra effort and soak up as much as I can. They saw things in me I didn't see in myself. I'm lastly very grateful for my family and my parents for always believing in me and seeing my potential. Their encouragement and their words of wisdom and philosophy remind me that I can overcome all of my obstacles and that I will achieve each and every one of my goals, even if I don't know what they are just yet. Without all these people in my life, I would not be giving this speech that is not lost on me and it keeps me humble. Overall, I'm just as grateful to have been raised in this town, surrounded by kind-hearted and generous people, people who want to see their students and athletes succeed. Despite all the guidance I've received, I still have a habit of questioning my path and my future. Even so, I've always had someone behind me, reminding me to be resilient and to keep pushing. Teachers and coaches saw me as an individual who brought my own gifts and assets to the table. I felt encouraged and heard and this gave me the wherewithal to keep striving for success. I've watched friends before me earn the honor and go off to make their mark on the world. Thomiston has a way of creating these centered, grounded people. I wonder why is that? In a world with so much chaos and uncertainty, how does Thomiston generate so much success? I wholeheartedly believe that it comes down to this close knit village that we call home. The phrase "it takes a village" really has meaning here. The bond we feel is palpable and people lean on each other in times of need and step up when someone requires a helping hand. I believe that is what makes the difference. Thomiston people support one another. Many of you were there a few months ago when my soccer team went to the state semifinals. People go to the opera house and watch performances and support the arts. Whether it's project graduation, community fundraisers, or light up the town, people show up. This means so much to students who see that even if they struggle or have a hard day, there's people, people stand behind them and push, hold them up. I'm thankful for the connectedness that is this little town. I know the community and organizations like the Rotary Club will continue to support our students and athletes as they always have. I'm graduating soon, but I won't forget how much it shaped me. It is small, this community, but I wouldn't run it any other way. And I'm truly excited to take what I've learned to.
Azarela. Edison Purdy. Arya La Mesa Hamzy, Zoe Mashad, Hashmira Van Ormer, Mac Fair, Summer Holinka, and Violet Warren. These students were honored last month at a breakfast with the superintendent, so we congratulate them. Our next honoree is Grace Hornby. Who was our kid's governor candidate?
Hi, I'm Grace. All living beings have the right to exist on earth, yet at times we act cruelly towards animals. It's important to remember that while animals can't speak, they too have life and desire of our compassion.
I voted for Grace because she is kind. She always puts her best foot forward.
I voted for Grace because she's the most trustworthy person I know and she never lies.
I voted for Grace because she's respectful and responsive.
I voted for Grace because she's the most kind and respectful person that I've ever met and she can always handle anything that comes in her way, however hard it is.
I voted for Grace because when somebody's down, she always finds a way to build back up their confidence.
I voted for Grace because she, she's so helpful and she always puts everybody else before her.
The first thing that I'm going to do around this school is hang posters. The second thing is I'm going to start a fundraiser where you can run while walking your pet and you raise money every step. The third thing is I'm going to do a website to make people aware of animal abuse. If I'm elected kid governor, I will help stop animal abuse.
My name is Grace and I want to become Connecticut's kid governor because I want to put an end to animal abuse. My leadership qualities and skills are kind, brave, positive, good listener, confident, helpful, and caring. An example is I help people when they drop stuff. I want to change animal abuse in our state because an animal only has one life, just like us. So we should give them a good life like we would. My dogs at home were abused and when we adopted her, she was scared and hurt and she could barely walk. So imagine other dogs that were abused way more. I did some research and over ten million animals die from animal abuse each year. When I am elected as kid governor, I will encourage kids and adults to be kind to animals and report to an adult if you see animal abuse. And be the voice for the voiceless.
Save a voice for the voiceless.
Vote for the voiceless! Grace, 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 Grace.
So although Grace did not win at the state level, we are very proud and hope she continues with her platform of stopping animal abuse. Our January twenty-twenty-five staff spotlight is Jonathan Kozlak, principal at Black Rock School. Dear Chairperson Finer and members of the Thomaston Board of Education. It is with great pride and admiration that I write this letter to honor Mr. Jonathan Kozlak, principal of Black Rock School. Who is being recognized in the Thomaston Board of Education Staff Spotlight for January twenty-twenty-five. This well-deserved recognition celebrates his exceptional leadership, unwavering dedication, and profound impact on the Black Rock School community and Thomaston Public Schools as a whole. Since joining Thomaston Public Schools, Mr. Kozlak has demonstrated a unique blend of compassion, professionalism, and visionary leadership. Under his direction, Black Rock School has flourished as a nurturing, inclusive, and academically focused environment. Where both students and staff feel valued, supported, and inspired. Mr. Kozlak's commitment to fostering a positive school culture is evident in every decision he makes and every relationship he cultivates. One of Mr. Kozlak's standout qualities is his ability to build and maintain strong connection with students, staff, and families. He is a leader who listens intently, supports wholeheartedly, and guides thoughtfully. Whether he is greeting students at the door, engaging in meaningful conversations with parents, or empowering his staff to pursue professional growth. Mr. Kozlak exemplifies leadership rooted in respect and trust. These qualities have not only strengthened the sense of community within Black Rock School. But have also reinforced the school's reputation as a place where students thrive both academically and emotionally. Academically, Mr. Kozlak has spearheaded initiatives that enhance student learning and promote continuous improvement. His focus on high expectations and individualized instruction ensures that each student has the opportunity to achieve their fullest potential. By supporting innovative teaching practices, encouraging collaboration, and prioritizing student outcomes. Mr. Kozlak has cultivated an environment where excellence is, excellence is not just encouraged, but achieved. Furthermore, Mr. Kozlak's leadership during times of challenge has been nothing short of inspiring. His calm demeanor, steady guidance, and commitment to the well-being of his school community have set a standard for leadership that all of us aspire to emulate. He consistently approaches challenges with grace, adaptability, and a solutions-focused mindset that instills confidence in all who work alongside him. As an administrator, mentor, and role model, Mr. Kozlak has earned the admiration and respect of his colleagues. His ability to inspire others, celebrate successes, and approach every challenge with positivity and perseverance. Has made him an invaluable member of our Thomaston Public Schools family. Mr. Kozlak's leadership continues to shape not only the future of Black Rock School, but also the lives of the students, families, and educators who walk through its doors each day. On behalf of Thomaston Public Schools, I extend my heartfelt congratulations to Mr. Jonathan Kozlak on receiving this well-deserved honor. His dedication, integrity, and passion for education exemplify the very best of what it means to be a leader. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to celebrate this exceptional individual in such a meaningful way, and that was submitted by Superintendent Cost.
Thank you.
Next, we have the presentation on the updated Thomaston Public Schools Professional Education Review of Practices. With our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Jennifer Price.
Good evening all. After submitting our new teacher eval to the state, we received some feedback that we needed to make modifications. Most of the modifications were specific language that needed to be added to Ed Advances model, but there were a couple changes that we have to our customizations. The first change is that there was an ESP page required. The ESP page lists all of our PDEC members in Thomaston. So that is at the beginning of the ROP model. Additionally, we were required to incorporate a timeline for the evaluations. So this timeline includes goal-setting conferences. Beginning of Kappa cycle and end of Kappa cycle. There was some non-negotiable language that was embedded throughout the entire document, which included multiple sources of evidence. For the goal-setting process, this did impact our customizations in Thomaston. Um, we had to modify and use non-negotiable language, which included. Goals may be set for one, two, or three-year periods. Originally, in the document that we submitted, we had um. Included that goals were annual and individual. So we did change the language to goals may be set for one, two, or three-year periods. Um, they may be developed individually or collaboratively. So this language had to stay. So we added specific language after speaking with Sharon Fuller at the State Department of Education. That Thomaston recommends non-tenured staff develop an annual individual goal. Part of this change, she assured us, was that um all goals had to be mutually agreed upon with the evaluator and staff member. There was a change to feedback in our original submission. Feedback was written with an option of formal. And this had to be changed to state that feedback must be a combination of written and formal. There was also a timeline that had to be incorporated, so feedback must be provided within five business days of an observation. Feedback must include multiple and varied quantitative and qualitative indicators of professional growth. There was specific language that had to be added that an evaluator must hold an O ninety-two certification. There's a requirement by the local Board of Education to facilitate an annual orientation for educators. This was incorporated into the document as well. As an addition. And then lastly, disputes. Claims that the district has failed to follow the established procedures of the evaluation and support program shall be subject to the grievance procedure set forth by the current collective. So this was non-negotiable language that had to be added. So that is the extent of the changes that we needed to incorporate. Um, we will need to vote on that and um after the vote, I will be resubmitting the plan to the state of Connecticut. Were there any questions on the modifications that needed to be made? This is the, um, so we had to adopt one of the state-approved um models and this was the model, so it is separate.
Steve Carr vote to acknowledge and approve. The updated Thomaston Public Schools Professional Educator Review of Practice recommended by the Professional Development and Evaluation Committee. With state-required modifications for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year.
Beth Campbell second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. I'll let you continue.
So the next presentation is a recap of the climate survey and our school improvement planning. At the end of October, we administered surveys to students, staff, and parents. Participation rates included sixty-four students at Black Rock School. Only third graders at Black Rock were given the survey. At Center School, one hundred and ninety students were given the survey. At Thomaston High School, we split middle school and high school. So students in, there were a hundred and eleven students in grades seven and eight that completed the survey. And one hundred and six students in grades nine through twelve. Overall, we had one hundred and twenty-seven parents complete the survey, which is phenomenal. Um, in the spring, when we sent out our survey, I believe we had around forty responses. And there were one hundred and three staff members that completed the survey. Key themes that emerged from the survey that align with our district goals are school culture and safety. Uh, there was a lot of feedback, um, placing a strong emphasis on addressing bullying across all grade levels. A need for improved student behavior management. Desire for more positive school environment. And concerns about consistency in discipline. Academic support also emerged as a theme with a need for enhanced communication about student progress. Receiving more frequent updates um outside of um a notification about academic probation or conferences, report cards, et cetera. A desire for more individualized learning approaches, which included remediation and acceleration. A request for clearer academic expectations. We have a huge focus on this in Thomaston over the past four years with competency-based education. And our partnership with Marzano Academies with the use of proficiency scales. And support for struggling students. So there was a strong desire that we provide adequate intervention. Communication emerged as a third theme, a need for transparent communication channels. A desire for timely updates about student issues. Improved parent-teacher communication systems. Uh, this specifically, we utilize Parent Square in Thomaston. I'm sure we all get a million Parent Square messages. So we've been meeting as an admin team and discussing how we can streamline what we're doing. In terms of the process, it's not so much the platform, it's how we're communicating. Um, and there was a desire for parents to hear more from teachers than from the administrative team. And streamline notification processes. There was a final theme that involved professional development and resources. Our staff desire, a focus on having more autonomy and support. A need for adequate prep time, access to effective teaching resources, and consistent professional development opportunities. So as you know, we have um. In the beginning of the year, we have convocation on the first day, staff is back. We have one full day of PD before our students return on Wednesday for half-days. And then we have one full PD day in November and one in February. So this year, it was quite challenging to provide that autonomy and support that our teachers desire with the state mandates that required. Professional learning to be allocated in certain ways. Alignment with our improvement plan, having high expectations for every learner. Um, survey results show that we need consistent academic standards. Again, this is some of the work that we're doing with Marzano and competency-based education. Support for individualized learning approaches. And a focus on student engagement and achievement. So really looking at redesigning curriculum and instruction to be more meaningful and engaging for our students. Teacher support and resources. So creating a needs assessment to determine what specific professional learning is desired by staff. Allocating resources properly once we have that information and support for improved teaching conditions. And then last, but certainly not least, is a focus on safe collaborative learning spaces. So developing anti-bullying approaches, focusing on creating a positive culture, and enhancing our communication systems. So our implementation focus areas include a comprehensive anti-bullying strategy. Enhanced communication across stakeholder groups. Improved academic support systems. Professional development needs aligned with identified needs and resource allocation based on stakeholder feedback. So that was a recap of the survey results. Um, all of you had received the full presentation from the Achievement Committee. I'll spare you the hour and a half that was. Um, so moving on into the Thomaston Public Schools Improvement Plan. First and foremost, a district-wide. First and foremost, a district-wide anti-bullying strategy. So forming a committee, providing professional learning, and implementing SEL protocols. I'm going to put in a shameless plug for Wednesday. We are having an Internet and Social Media Safety Presentation. Trooper First Class James White will be coming to Blackrock and presenting to our families. And that aligns with, he does touch on topics that involve cyberbullying. So it is aligned with that first board goal. The next goal, improving English Language Arts growth. So we have implementing, it's not really implementing. We've started this work years ago, but continuing the implementation of competency-based education, using literacy data for decision-making and tiered support. So what I've included, you have a little packet that supports some of the work that we've been doing towards this goal. Instructional coaching empowering teachers and students in literacy and math. So I'll focus on the literacy component as it directly pertains to the board goals. But just an overview about what instructional coaching is. We have two instructional coaches. Pam Nasamento is our literacy coach K six, and Jessica Freeman is our math coach K six. Both of them work directly with our staff and students. They form professional partnerships. They provide job-embedded professional development, which is critical for our continuous growth. They know our district. Pam and Jess have been in our district for many, many years. There's a focus on evidence-based instructional practices, goal-oriented collaboration to improve student outcomes, and continuous support and feedback system. So what makes our coaches truly special is that they're here all the time. This isn't somebody that we're consulting with that comes into Thomaston, provides some professional learning, and then we never hear from them again. Pam and Jess work hard providing the professional learning to our staff, and they're in our district, and they're able to follow up and provide follow-up support to our staff. Some core components of the literacy coaching align with the goal. Pam supporting reading and writing instruction in the classroom, modeling effective literacy strategies with teachers and students through co-teaching. So just as our special ed department is involved in co-teaching, our coaches are also in the classroom, providing co-teaching. They're creating literacy centers with materials for small group instruction, training teachers in new state-mandated curriculum with state-testing platforms, scheduling district and state testing, analyzing student reading data to track improvement over time, and pinpointing areas where students may be struggling, and then working with teachers to create plans and design instructional resources to address these, and then supporting diverse learners' literacy needs. So I'm just going to skip a math piece for the purpose of this presentation. If you flip to the next page, there's some photos included of the work that both Pam and Jess, even though Jess is our mathematics coach, they both work very well together, and they integrate math and language arts whenever possible. So the first picture is a third-grade book tasting cafe where students sampled various book genres and themes and completed activities. Then there's a second-grade writing lesson where they're doing, they're engaging in collaborative storytelling. And this was fun. Every year, we participate in one school, one book. So this is a picture from when the Lorax was chosen, and all of the students, as you could see, were chained, turned into the Lorax, and then they were writing, "If I were the Lorax, this is how I would help the earth." And these were posted around the building. Pam has worked hard creating state-mandated testing administration binders for teachers. These were created for teachers K six, and all of the teachers were trained in the testing protocols with the new reporting platform. This is an example next to it of a first-grade binder that was created to support literacy with our new Amplify curriculum. Students use these binders both at home and at school. The next page is some pictures for Humanities Trip to the Mark Twain House. Pam has been working very hard collaborating with our classroom teachers to create these culminating activities at the end of our units. So these are some pictures from the end of a first-grade unit on the human body. These I submitted last month to Amplify. Amplify will go and post pictures from districts about these different types of celebrations. So I'm hopeful that in the future, we will see these photos on Amplify's website. The kids absolutely loved this. They were playing Operation. It was a lot of fun. Kindergarten classroom lessons on shapes and storytelling. So this is an example of how Pam and Jess are working collaborative with, correct, uh, collaboratively with the language arts and the math content. They work hard each year to continuously improve our summer programming to keep kids more engaged. This past year, we had our highest rate of participation in the summer program, and we received a lot of great feedback, and we're looking forward to improving the summer programming even more. They organize author visits. So this is an example of one of the author visits, helping to organize Community Read-A-Loud Day with members of the Thomaston community. Holding curriculum nights. So there was a Reading Under the Stars Curriculum Night where parents came in with their children, and we modeled strategies to use at home. We will be having another literacy night in February, where our families will come in, they'll learn about the new Amplify curriculum. They'll be going home with new resources that they can help their students with. Pam is working with Ms. Melissa at the library to have applications available to parents to fill out for a library card. So Pam will go down to the library. Pam will be going and returning all of the applications to the library to get the library cards for students, and then the students will take the library cards home with them. So they'll have that as well if they haven't had a chance or opportunity to get down to the library and apply for one themselves. Meg Sleikis does a great job with some of the programs she does with her Pathways Grant. Both Pam and Jess have presented at the parent nights, informing parents of how they can support their students at home. The next page is an example of a summer work reward. Students were, they got to go to Thomaston Lanes for some bowling, had a ton of fun. And then most recently, Summer Work for 2024. At Center School, a presenter came and put on a laser show that the kids thought was phenomenal. The coaches visit classrooms, create lessons for students to participate in a variety of tasks, including reading, writing, math, problem-solving, and STEM. And this occurs every day all throughout the year in our classrooms to support teachers. Pam took on the role of training all of our staff K six on the new DIBELS assessment that is part of the Amplify curriculum. So we had Amplify come out. We were only able to train the literacy team that was required by the state because we just couldn't have sub-coverage for an entire building or two. So Pam worked with teachers. She set up a schedule. The classroom teachers would sit with her as she was doing the assessments, and she'd do maybe three or four of them and do a gradual release. So then the classroom teacher was taking over some of that work. So she's doing that again with the mid-year, just so our teachers are feeling comfortable because starting the new year with a brand-new curriculum is definitely challenging. We didn't have much of a heads-up from the state with changing our curriculum. So we really appreciate all of the work that our coaches and interventionists and literacy team are putting into this work. And some of the essential coaching skills are just being an active listener, effective questioning, data analysis, constructive feedback. Building trust is huge. It goes hand-in-hand with, you know, having that constructive feedback, professional communication, and time management. So I just wanted everybody to kind of have an idea of the work that is being done towards these goals by our coaches, by our teachers, by our literacy team. Initiatives at the high school are developing safety plans, incorporating restorative practices, holding inclusive events. And I wanted to clarify the language on this because I know when we hear the term inclusive, sometimes we think of more of the special education realm. Our students in the survey on their feedback specifically were looking for activities that brought everybody together, not a particular club or interest, but getting everybody in the building. And then providing instructional support. So this year at the high school, there are identified teachers providing push-in ELA and math support. For pupil services, some of the key components of the plan are developing district-wide strategies tailored to various age groups to address bullying, training staff, holding monthly sessions on inclusive practices and de-escalation techniques, family engagement, launching workshops on anti-bullying and fostering belonging, and then reading intervention. So implementing targeted programs for students with disabilities. Thomaston, we are a very small community, but we have a ton of resources to support literacy. We use Orin Gillingham, we have Spire, we have LLI. And I'm sure I cannot go through the whole list because we have everything based on a particular student's needs. At Center School, there's a large focus on SEL activities, implementing whole-school social-emotional learning, activities quarterly, reducing chronic absenteeism through positive interventions. And, you know, we know as a team, by improving climate and culture, we're going to inherently increase or decrease chronic absenteeism by both staff and students. When people want to come to school and they're happy, they're going to come. And then ensuring the use of proficiency scales in all classes and aligning assessments with those scales accordingly so we can make sure that we're using good data to make our decisions. And at Blackrock, similarly, there's a focus on SEL with weekly SEL lessons for pre-K and kindergarten, monthly lessons for grades one through three, and quarterly character assemblies, bi-weekly committee meetings, collaborating with families, and connecting with community resources to address attendance, and the incorporation of play-based learning. So by incorporating purposeful play throughout the curriculum, there's a focus on enhancing executive functioning and development in our students. So next steps and key takeaways for our improvement planning is, number one, to implement anti-bullying strategies across all schools and grade levels, enhance ELA instruction with a focus on competency-based education and data-driven approaches, promote inclusive culture through SEL activities and family engagement, and most importantly with any improvement plan is monitoring progress and making changes and adaptations as we go through. Are there any questions on the survey or improvement plan?
Matt Van Orme, you just mentioned that you guys are only allotted two professional development days a year.
But I'll, let me clear, I'll clarify that. So it's not two a year. We have, in the beginning of the year, so staff come back on a Monday, that we have convocation in the morning, and then teachers have time in their classroom. We have the two full days in the beginning of the year, then we have Tuesday. And then there are three half-days. So when students come back, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we have the half-days in the afternoon. And then the only two full professional development days during the year are one in November and then one in February. So I wanted to point that out because there are many districts in the area that have early release days or additional professional learning opportunities.
Adding full days would require us to change the number of days that teachers are paid to work, which would increase the cost of paying teachers. So right now, we have a one hundred eighty-five-day school year with a hundred and eighty-one going to students and four going to professional development. If we have two snow days, then that one hundred and eighty-first day becomes a professional development day as well. And Jen does the planning for that so that we can do it, have it ready in a package, ready to go. But as far as doing early release, that would reduce the number of hours that students are in school, but it would not cost additional funds to do it.
The faculty does do professional development on their meeting days. It's in team times and things like that. It's not like they don't do any other development.
So consistently across the district, three Mondays a month, there are after-school meetings that last approximately one and a half to two hours. And then the prep time or the common planning time does vary between the buildings based on scheduling.
Thank you.
So then to your, your concern, Matt, I think the reason why Jennifer spent some time really focusing on the coaches is we need the time that's embedded in the school day also because we only have a finite number of hours to do PD.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the information.
Moving into our student representative reports.
In regards to academics, many students are catching back, back up on the load of work after winter break. The next marking period closes towards the end of January, and teachers are doing well with the students. Many of the teachers have reported that the students are doing excellent with the due dates of assignments and maintaining good grades.
For clubs? For clubs this month, Student Council has been meeting to talk about the school's basketball rivalry night pep rally. Drama Club has been rehearsing for the next performance, Grease the Musical. The Science Club is meeting to talk about future upcoming events in the spring. Interact Club is planning a visit to Cook Willow and is doing a winter food drive. The Catering Club is going to be selling cake pops at some of the home basketball games. And all clubs currently have been meeting for upcoming events and activities, and there are no current ones for the month of January.
In terms of athletics, the basketball and indoor track season has started. The boys' basketball season started off at two to oh when this report was written. The boys play Terryville for rivalry night on Friday, January third. The girls' basketball team has started off their season with a one-to-three record when this was written. The outdoor track team has had two meets since the season has started and performed very well within the boys and girl, within the girls and boys. The indoor track team is also, also has a meet on Saturday, the fourth of January.
For special events, there are capstone presentations starting on January thirteenth through the sixteenth. The Superintendent Student of the Month Breakfast is on January seventeenth. And this is all for the month of January. All students, teachers, and admin are getting back into the groove, coming back from winter break.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Moving right along. In my report, we have our progress report on our twenty-four, twenty-five goals as presented. Tanya, do you have an update on the hundred and fiftieth committee? Thank you. Thank you. The next item is a proposal for a virtual Board of Education meeting whenever a snow cancellation occurs on our meeting date. So as it stands right now, to have a virtual meeting, we have to have someone actually come to the building, open the building, and someone needs to be here while we host the virtual meeting. So based on new legislation, which is listed here on our agenda, we would like to change that so that we do not have to have someone actually physically come up in the building to attend and we can do everything virtually. So if someone could make this motion, and then we can enter into a discussion.
Steve Carr vote to accept and approve that the Board of Education adopt a policy whereby any scheduled Board of Education meeting will automatically transition to a virtual format. Inducted in compliance with the provisions of section 149 of Public Act number 21-2, as amended by section 1 of Public Act number 22-3, whenever a school cancellation occurs on the day of the scheduled meeting. The superintendent is direct to ensure that proper notice, agenda post, posting and public access procedures are followed as required under the Freedom of Information Act.
May I hear a second?
Did anybody have any questions or concerns about our proposal here? All those in favor? I oppose, abstain? Very good. Thank you. And the last item under my report is the superintendent of schools monthly reports. As we voted on last month as part of the new evaluation process, we asked the superintendent to submit monthly reports. This month, we got a bonus report. But we are going to take formal action of that so that we all have a record that these reports are being submitted to us per the motion that we made last month. So would somebody please make this motion?
Steve Carr vote to accept and approve the superintendent of schools submission of a monthly report to support her progress in reaching the measurable areas of responsibility per policy 2400 per the action taken by the Board of Education during the December 9th, 2024 regular meeting.
Here a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I oppose, abstain? Thank you. This class, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Beginning of my report shows correspondence from me. I am asking that the board vote to acknowledge that correspondence.
Our vote to acknowledge the superintendent's correspondence per policy 2131 administration superintendent of schools as presented.
May I hear a second?
Any questions? All those in favor? We've been doing this for eight months now.
Is there a reason for it?
To check off our boxes to show that we are paying attention to the policies and procedures?
Thank you.
Yep.
The next part of my report.
We didn't finish the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you voted. Sorry. Excuse me.
We stopped their vote to have a discussion. All those in favor? I oppose, abstain? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Uh, next part of my report shows correspondence that I've received or that the Board of Education has received in the last month. And under reports, we have our administrative reports. We have two residency notices. And we have nine student discipline matters listed there. We have no requests for homeschooling. In the last month, we have our updated enrollment report. And then we begin the personnel portion of my report. We have four new hires. We have a number of transfers, new assignments and reassignments. We have one resignation. No retirements, no terminations or non-renewals. And we have one stipend that's not related to athletics and eight that are. I ask that the board acknowledge this report on personnel.
Steve Carr vote to acknowledge the superintendent's notification of personnel, specifically new hires, transfers, retirements, resignations, renewals, stipend, stipends per policy 4112, 4212, personnel certified, non-certified appointment and conditions of employment as presented.
May I hear a second?
Questions or discussion?
I have a question. What is Family Career Community Leaders of America?
It's the new club that we have here at the high school. So it, well, I think we have a member of that club here. Are you in that club, Megan? Or no? No, there's, it's a, it's a new club that started by Mrs. Riggs. To work with Christine will give you more of an elaborate answer, but it's to work with like food service and. Yeah. So it would be like future business leaders of America like FBLA in days of old. This would be a group like that. Very exciting. Yes.
The job coach transition skills for specialists in medical.
Yes, it's a position through the grant that was written a couple of months ago, I think. That was in Andrea's report, maybe even more than a couple of months ago. And so that position will be filled by someone that is actually an intern for the other days of the week. And she's going to be helping with transition for those students.
I have a comment that's just with Doc Watson being the district emergency management coordinator. That since our school security is a hot topic for us right now, that he may not be aware of all the stakeholders in the community to make sure that he has all their contact information so that they're all getting reports.
Okay, we just met about that and he's planning the end of the month district-wide meeting. So I will make sure that he has everyone's contact information. Yes.
Anything else? All those in favor? I oppose. I'm abstaining. Because my daughter is one of the coaches being approved, so I am abstaining for that reason.
Uh, the conclusion of my report, there is one request for family medical leave. There are no new interns or student teachers. And my favorite part of my report tonight is the request for the Board of Education to approve the 2026 June trip of the Travel Club to Belize. I will make sure to let Mrs. Abbott know that you're volunteering to shop.
Our student representatives should know the deal by now. Do you think we should approve this? Yes. That was a very quick head nod.
Probably have a motion on the table for this.
Yeah, and they nodded quick. They're not even going. They nodded. So must be good.
Steve Carr vote to accept and approve the Belize trip, the field trip, June 22nd, 2026 as presented.
Any questions or concerns? All those in favor? I oppose, abstain? Thank you.
And there was, there's no request for any sales or disposal of books or equipment at this time. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Cross. Moving into our committee reports. Mr. Carr, would you like to give a report on the budget audit committee?
Oh, yeah. Big budget. We'll be going into far into depths on that one this is this evening. But as of now, vote to accept and approve the business and financial report and expenditures per policy 3432, 3433, business, non-instructional operations, budget and expense report, annual financial statements as presented for December 2024.
Any questions or concern? All those in favor? I oppose, abstain? Thank you. Moving into our policy committee, Mr. Van Ormer.
Matt Van Ormer vote to accept and approve policy 5117.1 vocational and agricultural sign high school opportunities as presented.
May I hear a second?
Discussion? All those in favor? I oppose, abstain? Thank you.
For the fast tracking. For the bylaws 9311 of the Thompson Board of Education, policies will be adopted and amended after consideration of two regular meetings of the Board of Education unless by a vote of two-thirds of the members present at a Board of Education meeting, the Board permits a fast-tracking of the policy adopted or amended. I move that the policy committee proposed amendments to policy 9160, student representatives on the Board of Education to be permitted for fast-tracking by two-thirds of a vote of the members present at tonight's Board of Education meeting.
Steve Carr, second.
All those in favor of fast-tracking policy 9160? Indicate by saying I. I oppose, abstain? Thank you.
Van Ormer, I move to accept and approve the changes to policy 9160 student representatives of, on the Board of Education as presented.
Here a second.
Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor? I oppose, abstain? Thank you.